2025. We will start off with invocation by Pastor Doug Monday from Calvary Church of Maricopa, followed by the pledge of allegiance from council member Manfredi. Please rise if you're able.
Good today, and we just thank you for the opportunity that we have to gather here. And I thank you for this council. I thank you for the counsel that you've given us that have the best interests of this city in heart and in mind. And God, I just pray for them. I pray for wisdom. I pray by the power of your Holy Spirit. You'll give them wisdom beyond their own understanding. And Lord, I'd like to take a moment and pray for the police department and thank you for the police officers that keep us safe. God, thank you for the firefighters and the first responders that come out and make us safe. And so, Lord, I just pray your peace and your understanding and your wisdom over this meeting tonight. And we just ask this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you Pastor Monday and Councilmember Manfredi. That'll move us to roll call, please.
Councilmember Gettle.
Present.
Councilmember Nor. Councilmember Learman. Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right. That'll take us to the next section, which is proclamations, acknowledgements, awards, and presentations. And we do have a presentation tonight. So I will come down and introduce this subject. So as you can see in the agenda, we have a pretty exciting topic to talk about tonight. I'm excited to introduce to you a young man, 16 years old, that is an employee of the city of Maricopa, and some amazing things that he has done. And we felt like this was such a great opportunity to share such an accomplishment by one of our employees. His mother is here tonight, Natalie Davis, and, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, thank you very much. Thank you, Natalie. I appreciate that. Let me tell you a little bit about Natalie's daughter, nine-year-old Jude. She was swimming at Copper Sky, and Natalie had the rest of her children there as well. And Jude was in swimming and ended up in a serious situation where she needed some help. I can't cry. I mean, this is exciting. But it's so thrilling and so exciting to talk about. We have a lifeguard, 16-year-old lifeguard, Davian Herrera. And he works at our Copper Sky pool, and he didn't waste any time. He jumped into the swimming pool and saved this woman's life, this young lady's life, nine years old. So we wanted to acknowledge him tonight, and I know his family is here as well. And if you guys would like to come up and join us, we want to just give you a round of applause, Davian, for all that you've done. One more, Quinn. After we get the other family up here. So I want to introduce to you Natalie Davis. She is the mother of Jude, our nine-year-old that was rescued. And both Jude and Natalie would like to say a few words in the form of a letter to Davian. Please come forward.
Dear members of the city council, how do you thank someone for saving your child's life? That's the question I've been asking myself every single day since June seventh at Copper Sky. That was the day my little girl's life was in danger, a day that could have ended in tragedy. But because one young man, it didn't. Davian, a lifeguard at Copper Sky, was watching over that pool with more than just his eyes. He was present, he was prepared, and when my daughter needed him most, he was there. He didn't hesitate, he didn't panic, he saved her life. Because of Davian, I still get to hold my daughter. I still get to hear her laugh, see her smile, and watch her grow. As a mother, there are no words strong enough to, no gratitude deep enough to ever repay what he gave us that day. Davian's courage and quick action didn't just change my family's story, it became a reminder to us all that goodness and bravery that still exists in this world. He's a hero in every sense of the word. I'm asking this council and our community to honor him, to let Davian know that his actions didn't go unnoticed, and that we will forever be thankful. And Davian, I hope you know you'll always be a part of our family's story. You gave my little girl the gift of more tomorrows. You are and always will be our hero. Thank you.
Dear Davian, thank you for saving my life at the pool. You are my real-life superhero, and I will never forget you. All right. We don't get a chance to do that very often. What a pleasure. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. All right, that'll take us to the next section, which is the report from the mayor. Councilmembers, do you have something to share?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Marsh.
It's been a busy three weeks since our last meeting, on June nineteenth. We had a lunch and learn at the senior center, featuring the mayor and Chief Mark Goodman, and it was very informative. On the twentieth, we, we all attended the Arizona Transportation Board meeting. On the twenty-fourth, I attended the Pinal Partnership Government Relations meeting, where we were tracking the final bills going, going through the legislature. On June twenty-sixth, I was vice chair at the Pinal County Board of Adjustments meeting, and there's still been no progress on the zoning code update. On the twenty-seventh, several of us were at the Province Town Hall meeting, Amber Learman, Vince Manfredi, and Bill Robertson. On the thirtieth, I drove my neighbor Dale Brinkman to Banner University Hospital in Phoenix for his heart valve replacement, open-heart surgery, like I had a couple years ago. Twelve days later, I brought him home after a successful surgery. Councilmembers get to do fun things. Since then, I've just been celebrating that our city has managed to get the three forty-seven projects on ADOT's calendar, and the legislature funded the whole shebang. So I applaud, applause to our mayor, James Singleton, and his website, Ron Smith and his marketing skills, and to all of you who use the website to send thousands of emails to our legislators. And by the way, I was a lifeguard in the Vermont State Park system for several years, so I know what he did.
Very cool. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Manfredi?
I've never been a lifeguard, but thankfully they're there, because I can't swim. So it's been three weeks since our last confession, and, oh, I meant, meeting. No, we've done so much in the last, oof, forever. You know, it's been a long time since our last meeting, and we haven't had a chance to celebrate, as well as we should, our, our victory at an ADOT meeting back in June. And since then, I've had an RTAC meeting, a CAG meeting, and a couple other meetings. And all I kept hearing from everybody is, congratulations, how the hell did you do that? And I don't know sometimes, but I do know it came down to hard-nosed, oppressive, pressure that we put on from a council, from a, a committee, from a community, where it's understood that we need to make sure that three forty-seven is fixed. But, oh, the AC went off and everything. But it's not over. It's just definitely not over. We're gonna have to keep pushing and keep an eye on the legislature next year, because there's funding, always, issues when you deal with the government. So we just need to make sure we stay on top of it. You know, I wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about, so anyway, congratulations to everybody on three forty-seven and the funding that we've been able to accomplish. It's been very hard. I wanted to talk a little bit about an event I attended on the Fourth of July. It was a really cool event. And I gotta tell you, I've been to, huh.
Fourteen, ten?
Fourteen of those, fifteen of those, I don't even know, but hundreds of events in the city of Maricopa. And there was just something about this event that I enjoyed more than many others. And I think it was the staff, and the work that they've put in, and the understanding that they have of what the city wants and what the city needs. And it was more, it felt more community-oriented than some other stuff we've done. And it was just, from vendors I've heard, from people that were there, it was, it was great. It was a really good event. So if you haven't attended an event at the city of Maricopa, make sure you do. And make sure you're at the next Fourth of July. Now, somebody said to me online, they were like, well, how would I know it was happening? Okay, I'm gonna give everybody a warning today. Next year, on July fourth, at about nine o'clock, there's gonna be fireworks. And hopefully, even bigger. I read online, somebody mentioned from the city, that it's gonna be bigger fireworks next year. So, you know, this is an event that happens every year. It was a great event. I really enjoyed it. And yeah, that was that for that. And I think that's it.
Very good.
I'll leave the rest to you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Manfredi, thank you. Vice Mayor Wade?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the same sentiments as Councilmember Manfredi, in terms of the, I mean, the way that this Fourth of July program was held, was done, and the staff that supports and puts it on. These folks are truly amazing when they take a piece of blank dirt and turn it into a celebration. And of course, the celebration is, sharing the independence of our, our great country. It comes, it comes to, to light, it comes alive, when you see all the flags, the red, white, and blue shirts, and the hats, and all those things that are before you. And so I just wanted to, to thank the staff as well. I thought they did an excellent job. And I want to thank the members of the community who come out, because it is when they see you that you know, that they know you appreciate them. And that's, I think that's really important. So, thank you. Thank you all for the community, and thank you to the staff for doing what you do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, well, you know I gotta jump on the ADOT topic. It's a must, it's a requirement. I was gonna ask you, but he already let the cat out of the bag, in case you didn't know. But how could you not know? What happened June twentieth, and what happened June twenty-seventh? Very important dates for us, hopefully for an eternity until State Road three forty-seven is done. June twentieth, we had, oh, I think twenty-five to thirty people, including all of our council, including our Be Awesome young people. We had ten of them there to speak on behalf of their community. We had Supervisor Vitello there, and we had other members of the public, plus our three forty-seven team was there. We had twenty-five to thirty people speak. In fact, it was so obvious that we were prepared, that the other projects started calling people to bring in other people. So, but what I want to tell you about it, if you haven't read the story, there's a story out there, an editorial by Quinn, who's our communication director, and he tells the story so beautifully in regards to, when I first got there, we had some challenges with the other project that we were up against, and some heated conversations. And so, we made peace quickly with that. And as a result, one of the people that was really having strong feelings ended up, so he first talked to me, and then he ended up sitting next to our previous mayor, Mayor Price. And so Mayor Price got to help him understand some of the data, too. But in the long run, when those ten young people got up to speak, and they talked about the challenges to their families for three forty-seven, this tall, I mean, this guy was tall, this tall man from the area that was interested in the other project, came up to speak. All of his stack of papers that he had, that he wanted to show me, he didn't even bring them to the podium. He was so touched by the ten youth that spoke, and the message that the people of Maricopa gave, that he said, we are both here for our communities. And he spoke then specifically about his community, and it was a very peaceful event. But what happened in the long run is that the State Transportation Board heard the pleas of the citizens of Maricopa, heard the pleas of the residents from the other project, and they came up with a great solution. And to my knowledge, this is the first time that this has ever been done, especially in the final meeting. And so their resolution was to forego three repavement projects, of projects that were in fair condition, and move both, keep both projects, and move three forty-seven into the five-year plan. So you may have seen the pictures at that point, when they made that motion and approved it, the whole crowd just was in cheers, because now both projects had their projects still in the five-year plan. So it was really exciting. And then on June twenty-seventh, the, the work didn't stop there. Our staff, specifically Katie Proctor, our intergov, was at the Capitol, because now what do we need to do? We need to get the funds from the state for Riggs Road Overpass and the other interchanges. And so Katie worked it hard. She kept us, myself and the rest of the council, and City Manager Bitter informed in terms of what was happening. She talked to the people that were the right people to talk to. And lo and behold, within a couple days, and specifically on June twenty-seventh, the budget was approved with those funds. And so, I'm so delighted and happy to tell you tonight, that for the first time ever in the existence of the city of Maricopa, three forty-seven widening, Riggs Road Overpass, intersections, the repavement for the two existing lanes on each side, is all funded in the five-year plan. So it's pretty cool. Now, I agree completely with those who say, similar to Councilmember Manfredi, the work is not over. We have to make sure we keep those funds where they are. We have to get the projects rolling. We will be working with ADOT to understand the schedule, to even be part of the team that's working through that process. So just don't even fear that we're giving up and that we're their success. No, no, that's not the case. We will keep fighting for this. As soon as we have an idea of more details of the schedule, we'll make sure that the public is aware of that. And you'll also be able to find it on three forty-seven facts dot com. I just really quickly want to thank the partners once again. And so we have partners, the State Transportation Board members. I'm telling you, without those members that are currently serving on that board, I don't know that we would be here today. So I think it's really important to honor them. ADOT did a great job in terms of finding options. Pinal County with the twenty million dollars and the partnership that we have there. MAG with the ninety million dollars for the northern portion, and our legislators who voted for the funds within the budget. Those are our partners. And then the city of Maricopa and our residents for the money that we're contributing in our additional half-cent sales tax. All of that made this happen. Then we have locals we want to thank. I specifically want to thank our staff, because I know many of you don't get to work to the detail that I do with Ben and Katie. They're phenomenal. It was a great partnership with them. They worked hard. And we also have Matt, who is part of our finance department, and his staff, who worked through the half-cent sales tax, which got us to that point. And I know I'm probably missing people, because there were many staff members who contributed to the open houses and the boards that we put together. I'm, I'm thinking it was kind of like all hands on deck. It was pretty darn close. So we definitely want to thank all of staff. It was phenomenal. The three forty-seven fax group, fourteen hundred letters to each and every of the hundred legislators, and to State Transportation Board, and to Pinal County supervisors, they get them too, and then also to ADOT, without your push and your meeting on a monthly basis. And many of them went to many of the meetings at their own cost, their own expense, to speak and to support this. And our Be Awesome group, if you guys have never worked with Be Awesome, it's a, it's a youth coalition to make youth really wonderful citizens of the ci, of, of a city or the community that they're within. And as I indicated, ten of them went up and spoke, and they were so eloquent that they convinced people that they really cared about their city. I mean, and they really do. Our city council members, thank you all very much. They all came, and we had one that was able to watch online, which is perfect. And without you guys, we wouldn't be here either, because many of you have come to State Transportation Board meetings. And then our residents. Honestly, I don't think, I know it was said once prior, that it was a wonderful grassroots approach. I don't know of many who get fourteen hundred letters for the same title, same purpose. And so I think that's exciting. So what do you do next? Oh, I also want to thank, at the community center, they had a watch party with about fifty to a hundred people in it. And so our seniors showed up to support that as well. And I know, was it Ben, you, or Katie that showed the picture of, yeah, Katie, of everybody at the watch party. So thank you as well. So what do you do? You party. So we're gonna put up a slide, because you have to party this milestone. It is a fight. We're gonna keep the money. But you know what? We're gonna celebrate, and we're going to party. And so here's how it's going to work. You can see here, take note, put this on your calendar, save the date. On August ninth, from twelve to five, we are gonna have a pool party. It does not cost a thing, free to those who can attend. Pre-registration for this is important, because space is limited. You can only have so many people in the pool aquatic area. So if you're interested in this part of the party, make sure you get signed up. And then also on August ninth, from twelve to five, we're calling this the Fast Lane Fund. The first one was called the Car Pool Party. I love that. This is the Fast Lane Fund, twelve to five, at Copper Sky. We're gonna have entertainment, bouncy houses, family fun, and free hot dogs. And that's while supplies last, too, because we don't know how many people will show. But we'd love to have you out there. And just so you know, we're probably also going to have the message boards that talk all about the process in terms of the open house, and give some information for those who haven't received that. And we hope to have a schedule by that time, but we're not sure. And then lastly, the Cruise Control Lane, which is August twelfth, eleven to one, at the Maricopa Community Center, where we're gonna enjoy a potluck with entertainment games and prizes. And that's for folks fifty-five and older. So we're gonna celebrate there also. Three ways to celebrate. So I expect to see you all there, because this is something definitely worth celebrating. Okay, enough about three forty-seven. I just want to touch quickly on the Fourth of July as well. And for those that weren't able to attend, I kind of want to give you a vision. We're We're sitting, watching the band, it was a rock band, AZD, DZ, is that what? Yeah, yeah. They were pretty phenomenal. People loved them. And even if it wasn't your thing, you could just sit and watch, and people watch. And what I noticed is that there were people out in that big soccer field, tons of families playing soccer, getting ready for the fireworks, having a picnic, loved it. Then you had the BMX demonstrations that went on almost hourly, I think. Phenomenal crowd there, watching the BMX riders. And then you had the water slides for all the kids, and the bouncy houses that were in a different area, packed with family, packed with kids. And then you had food trucks, how can you go wrong with that? And then all of our small businesses that wanted to participate were out there. And so, it was delightful to see everyone from the city of Maricopa and the involvement that they had. And then, of course, the fireworks, and they were phenomenal fireworks. So, it was, I completely agree with you. I told the city manager and staff, you guys did a great job. I think it was the best Fourth of July that I have ever been to, just because you had people everywhere, just enjoying every element of Copper Sky Regional Park. So, very cool. All right, that's your report from the mayor, report from city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, I've really missed out since I was in first grade, I skipped first grade, oddly enough, but I missed out on the show and tell presentations, so I brought something This is a sample of what it will look like for our next phase on the decorative wall project along Maricopa-Casagrande Highway. So, this metal here is something that our staff can do, and we've cut out some shapes of horses or desert-type of amenities, whether that's a Road Runner, or a cactus, or what have you. And some of those will be placed on some of the panels of the decorative walls along the Maricopa-Casagrande Highway. So, that is something we hope to add to the sense of place of our community. You know, when we often talk about what attracts people, or what adds to the feeling of closeness within our community, a lot of it is the sense of place and the art that we have around town. Some people resonate with the signal boxes, some people resonate with the M monument as you enter Maricopa from three forty-seven, and you instantly get that feeling like your home. Some people resonate with the horses around town, whether it's in front of the library, or the community center, or city hall, or various other places around town. And some people resonate with murals in our parks, or on the water tower. And so, we've tried to provide a wide variety of these types of amenities to add to the feel of the community and to bring people together. And that's really what we're looking for as part of this next phase with the decorative wall. And so, we'll continue to do that, see how things go, and add those as it may be available here, as our city staff is able to do that. Fortunately, over the last few years, the staff was able to purchase a plasma cutter and get proficient at that. We have ability to powder coat and paint, and so, all of this is able to be done in-house, very cost-efficient, and really adds to the feel of the community. So, excited to see that here in the next few weeks and months. Thank you, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, city manager. All right, that'll take us to the call to the public. Let me read quickly what we all need to know about that. Procedures to follow if you address the council are: council requests that you express your ideas in three minutes or less, and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take legal action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal agenda. So, I do have one speaker card. I'll invite that person up first, and then I'll open it up to anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward. So, I'd like to invite up Barry McCain.
Good evening, Mayor, city councils. My name's Barry McCain, born and raised here. Maricopa's endeared to me because I learned how to walk here, just that simple. I was going to talk about the legislature as a lobbyist, but too many lobbyists walk up to me and say the same thing. Well, it's over with. And it's not. I'm not about it. I got a hundred and fifty, my lobby company has a hundred and fifty bills for Pinell County alone. Nothing stops. It's a continual process, and we're going to be there. I was upset about the sixty percent budget cuts on education, because my children mean everything to us. We seen that tonight. With more we can do, I've seen this from the fifties on in Maricopa, and we are not going to walk away. I was also brought up about going to Washington DC. It's pretty faint out there, that's true, but, you know, that's part of the thing. But we have a hundred and fifty-one bills right now in Pinell County, and I'm going to make sure that we protect Maricopa, and I'm not happy about what they did for ADOT for I-ten and three forty-seven. We had an accident this morning. It's something we have to work at, but we have some good ideas, and I want us to know, we're not going anywhere. I wish I could get away, I just can't. It's, I love my country. You know, that's why I was headed to the Olympics, that's why I was as good in the military as I was. When I talk about the Arizona, about the personnel reliability program, there was five thousand of us in the world, and it's all because of Maricopa. And I thank Maricopa for that, even though I'm seventy-one, but it's dear to my heart. Thank you. We'll see you in the session.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. All right, would anyone else like to approach the podium? Yes, please come forward. Ron, your item is on seven-five. Do you want to wait for the item, or would you like to speak now? One more time? Okay, very good. Yes, please come forward. Eight dot five, I'm sorry. Ron, eight dot five.
I'm Sue Van Gosin, four-one-four-five-two, West Los Arlen, and I'm asking again urgently, we need a school zone sign on Porter, on Porter Road between Honeycutt and Bolin that faces Porter Road to let the traffic coming forty-five miles an hour know they're entering a school zone, to slow down, not to run that light. We're going to, we're going to lose kids, because as soon as they get the walk light, they step out into the street, they don't look to see what the traffic's doing. And the person that's trying, you know, the traffic, or the crossing guard, can't keep them all back. I watched several times this year, and there are just too many waiting to cross, they don't wait for her signal, and they don't wait for all the traffic to stop. We need a school zone sign there, at least one facing Porter Road, I mean, facing Honeycutt, so that the traffic coming from Honeycutt at forty-five miles an hour is aware that they're at a school zone. There are six schools using that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? Seeing none, I will close the call to the public. That'll move us to consent agenda item. Council, I have a staff request to pull Agenda Item seven dot seven. So, if you make the motion, would you please include the pulling of Agenda seven dot seven? Are there any additional items that you would like to talk about or pull?
Motion to approve consent without seven dot seven.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without seven dot seven. That'll be handled at a future council meeting. And I have a second by Vice Mayor Wade. Any additional comments?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Can we just take Councilmember Norris? I think she wanted to do a motion to approve consent agenda without seven dot seven, and then want to do a motion to table seven dot seven.
Oh, is that what we need to do?
It should be a separate motion.
Okay, very good.
I think that's what Councilwoman Norris wanted.
Okay, so two motions?
Two motions, it sounds like.
Yes, two motions, two votes.
Two, two separate votes. So, should we vote this one first?
Do the consent agenda without seven dot seven.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table.
Very good. That's the motion on the table. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Mayor, did we have a second on that motion?
Yes, Vice Mayor Wade. That motion is approved. And so, then your second motion?
Motion to table seven dot seven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to table seven dot seven and a second. Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion, that motion carries. Councilmember Learman, your yes came in slightly afterwards, was that for a yes to approve?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. So, that's unanimous, and that motion carries as well. Thank you very much. All right, that'll move us on to the regular agenda item, and we have a guest speaker tonight. This is a presentation from Pinell Partnership. So, please come forward, Mr. McFarland.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I did have a couple of items I wanted to leave with you, if it's okay, if I approach. Councilmember Man Freddy, that's in case you don't know where you are.
I know. I was looking at it, and I said it's blank, and he said, "Turn it over." And there it is right there.
Well, thank you again for allowing me to address the council tonight. My name is Craig McFarland. I am the president and CEO of Pinell Partnership, which the city of Maricopa is a member. And so, I am here to give you an update, kind of fill you in on what we're doing. And you have several of your members who are very active in the group, so, and I appreciate their participation. And so, you know, as past mayor of the city of Casagrande, I've always been jealous of your chambers, your city hall here, so it's always nice to come in here into a really nice, professional building. We have a nineteen-twenty-six old schoolhouse. It's historic, it's beautiful, but this is also beautiful. So, thank you again for letting me speak. I think there's, oh, there it is, okay. So, just to kind of give you a little snapshot of who Pinell Partnership is, if you're not familiar, it's a five-one-C-six nonprofit. We have over two hundred members now, and it's made up of just a whole cross-section of industry, business, small, large, nonprofits, municipalities, the county. So, we are quite diverse in terms of the memberships that we represent. The mission really is to help Pinell County and unite the vision of Pinell County. So, it's taking people who have interest in Pinell County and putting us all together, and making, helping us all work together collaboratively to make Pinell County better. And that's really the bottom line. We have eight committees. That little handout sheet that I gave you, the small square one, has all the committees listed. It also has the emerging leaders, and on the other side, it says, "Join Us." You guys are already members, but if you scan that QR code, it will take you to the website. And I will tell you, if you go to the website and you need to look at a county map, and Rich, you can close your ears on this one, it's easier to get to the county's maps through our website than it is through the county. So, just a little secret, if you really want to go, just scan that QR code, and you go right to their maps. Sorry, dig on the county. I love the county, though. We have a lot of different topics that we do. We have a breakfast every month, except for the month of July, and the next one is actually August first, and it will actually include Harold Crist, who's going to be the moderator, and it's going to be on the state, the state of economic development in Pinell County. So, it should be a good breakfast. It's going to be in Casagrande at the Radisson. As you know, we move the breakfasts around the county. And Ryan from Apache Junction will be there, Christian Price, the city of Maricopa, Mackenzie Lecter from Eloy, and Richard Welke from the city of Casagrande. Those will be the panelists that will be on this particular one. We've done the mayor's roundtable, we have water management, or, I'm sorry, these are actually the topics that we've covered, the state of energy, the state of education. Additionally, we're going to have one on transportation this year. We'll also have one on the September, on our zoning changes and the zoning laws that were passed by the legislature. So, we're going to bring zoning experts, attorneys together, and have that conversation on how does that affect us? How's that affect all of our municipalities and the county moving forward? We're also going to have another one on water, and we'll also have one on transportation. So, the committees are made up of economic development, government relations, transportation, business, education, water, resources, health, human services, open spaces, and we've changed that last one from renewable energy to just energy, because the need is energy. The need is not necessarily just renewable energy, it's the need for energy. So, we wanted to take the focus off of just renewable energies, especially since the county's pushing back on a lot of solar programs right now. But solar is still needed, but it's just a piece. So, we want to focus on, is it micro-nuclear, is it water, is it wind, you know, is it solar, is it coal, is it, you know, is it gas? So, all of those are on the table. So, we've changed that, and we're going to kind of approach it from a need-for-energy standpoint. We've had a very active, a very active government relations committee, which Mr. Marsh is part of. We have been meeting with the water committee every week since January, until the legislature finally signed a died, which was a great day. And we were able to pass two pieces of legislation. We hired a lobbying firm that's been very active with your, with your staff as well. We've been active on transportation. We sent letters to every legislator on three forty-seven and twenty-four, and for the ASU Decision Theater. Those are the three appropriations that we had at the legislature. All three were passed. So, and congratulations to you all on your efforts with three forty-seven. But it's a group effort. I mean, we've all been working on it, and we all will continue to work on it, because you're right, it's not over. And getting this piece of appropriations through was very, very important. I personally went with our lobbyist and met with the appropriation chairs from both houses, and I talked about three forty-seven, and every one of them said, "We know about three forty-seven." So, you all have done a very good job of educating the legislators about three forty-seven. So, again, congratulations on that. This next year, we're going to be working with ASU, since the appropriations was passed, we were able to get the county to put in three hundred thousand dollars. We got half a million from the appropriations, and ASU is going to contribute a half a million. So, it's about one-point-three million dollars to begin to plan a regional transportation plan for Pinell County. So, we finally have that going. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow to kick it off, and we will continue to communicate that to you, and make sure that those interested in that process are involved. So, that's all part of our lobbying effort this next year as well, and since we've got the water completed, we got those two pieces of legislation, which really are game changers for Pinell County. Super excited to have that done, but now, now the work begins in terms of getting the rest of the utilities as designated water providers, which you're fortunate enough here at Arizona. designated water providers, which you're fortunate enough here at Arizona, or that Global Water is already designated. So you have that, that already in your pocket. But we need that also for Santan. We need it for, we need it for Coolidge, for, for Casagrande for sure. And so hopefully we'll move that forward and, and it'll improve the entire county. These are just some projects that we've been working on, that we worked on in the past. Really, we do have a golf tournament on the, coming up on, in October. So if you happen to want to play in the golf tournament, it's a good benefit for Penal Partnership. Again, I already mentioned the collaboration with ASU. Our lobbying efforts, we will probably continue this next year. We need to figure out some ways to fund it because it is expensive. And so that's one thing that has not been in the budget, but we had some funds that we were able to fund it this past year. So, but we think it's important. It's actually given us a very good presence at the capital. And we've been able to, I think, affect some changes that are, are positive for all of us. This is just a real quick economic outlook. This is the projection for the county. We're, we expect the county in the next 10 years to grow 32%. That's pretty significant. So we need, we need a plan. We need that transportation plan. We need that water fixed. We need 347 fixed. You know, so all of these things are critical to the growth of Penal County. And as we move forward, you know, six of the top 15 cities in population growth are in Penal County. And you are one of them. And so, as we move forward, this, you know, the economic outlook is good. We have a diverse, diverse portfolio of industry and manufacturing. So I don't see that, that there's any downturn coming in terms of, like we saw in 2008, 2009. We are not reliant totally on home building. That we have the technology industry that's out there now. I mean, Casagrande is fortunate, we have Lucid with, you know, 2,500 employees. We have LG up in Santan. And we need to work on getting some industry here in Casagrande, or in Casagrande, sorry. That's a football. Here in Maricopa, it's so, it's so important that you guys get some industry so that you can keep some of your residents here instead of all of them having to commute out, which I know is a major problem. But we'll work on that. We'll continue to work on the economic development side with the help of, of Christian and, and some of your other staff. We'll continue to work on that. Again, water, transportation, energy, education, workforce, those really are going to be the critical elements that we look at here going forward, especially in the next 10 years. And that's all I have. I just wanted to, again, thank you all for your participation. Encourage you to participate more if you have that ability. I know Nancy, you're on our executive board, so thank you for participating in that. I know Bob is very active with our government affairs. And anyone else is welcome to participate in any of those committees that I, that I gave you. If you do decide you want to get active in it, please let me know or Rena know and we'll make sure you're, you're on the list.
Very good. All right, I'm going to open it up for council in case they have any questions. Council, do you have any questions, comments? I would just like to say, Mr. McFarland, I knew I was going to miss somebody on my thank yous. And so I want to publicly thank Penal Partnership and Mr. McFarland because when we were doing the open houses, we wanted key individuals who knew and understand and understood the condition and the need for 347 to speak out. And he did not hesitate in writing a letter of support. So, thank you very much. I've now added you to my, to my list, so I don't do that again. I hope I didn't miss anyone else, but thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That'll move us to agenda item 8 dot 2, which is a resolution. And Derek, I believe you have a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council. Derek Shearer with the Development Services Department, Planning Division here to present the next item, 8.2. This is for Resolution RES 25-26 for case number ABDN 24-010, a right-of-way abandonment for West Honeycut Avenue. This is a request by the city of Maricopa to abandon a segment of right-of-way along West Honeycut Avenue. The portion to be abandoned includes an approximately 22-foot wide portion on the northern half of West Honeycut Avenue, just east of North John Wayne Parkway. The abandoned portion of the public right-of-way will be acquired by the adjacent property owner without compensation. Here on the map, you can see, right when you're pulling into the new Lowe's development, the north side of Honeycut Avenue is not needed by the city anymore. As you can see, the roadway has been built out. This is an extra portion that is needed for drainage for the adjacent property. For this application, notification letters were mailed out to local utilities on June 26th. Also, the site was posted on June 26th advertising this abandonment and this council hearing. Today's a council hearing. Staff has not received comments from the public about the requested abandonment. The notification report is in Exhibit B of the council's packet. Staff is in support of the abandonment. The request satisfies the findings that are required for right-of-way abandonment in the city. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 25-26 for case number ABDN 24-010, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff memo and as amended by the mayor and city council. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Derek. Folks, this is an open public hearing, so at this point I would like to open the public hearing. I have no speaker cards, but if you are here to speak on this item, please come forward. Very good. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Council, are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move that we approve?
Move to approve by Councilmember Gettle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Norris. One last chance for questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to 8 dot 3. And Derek, that's you again. In fact, I think you're the whole show.
I am the whole show tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, splash page. The next case on the agenda is ABDN 25-001. This is a right-of-way abandonment for a portion of West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This is a request by the city of Maricopa to abandon a segment of the right-of-way along West, West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The portion to be abandoned is an approximately 371-foot-long portion located between North Graythorne Drive and West Bolin Road, adjacent to the new Copper Sky Fieldhouse facility. And the abandoned, abandoned area will be utilized as future parking for the Copper Sky recreational facility. The abandoned portion of the public right-of-way is going to be absorbed by the parcel where the new Copper Sky Fieldhouse extension will be. And this is without compensation to the city. Here I have a map showing the area to be abandoned. As you can see, it's that little, little strip of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Graythorne and that first driveway before Bolin Road. This is going to be converted into DG parking spaces, just like you can see just south of the highlighted area there. This will be extra parking for the whole Copper Sky facility, but then also for the new fieldhouse. For this application, the notification letters were sent to the local utilities on June 26th. Also on June 26th, the site was posted advertising this abandonment and this council hearing. And on July 15th today, we have the council hearing. Staff has not received public comment at the time of writing of the report or to this date. Notification report is available as Exhibit B in the council's packet. Staff supports the abandoned request as it satisfies the criteria for right-of-way abandonment in the city. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 25-27 for case number ABDN 25-001, subject to conditions set forth in the staff memo and as amended by the mayor and city council.
Very good. Thank you, Derek. Council and public, this is a open public hearing as well. So I will open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, but if you are here to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Council, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilmember Marsh.
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 25-27.
Very good. I have a motion to approve and a second by Vice Mayor Wade. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Derek. That'll take us on to 8 dot 4.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item on the agenda, 8.4, is for Resolution 25-25. This is a general plan minor amendment request for GPA 24-03 for the Hartman Ranch project. This is an application by CBL Consultants on behalf of Cold Maricopa 193 LLC, located at the southeast corner of West Dean and North Anderson Road for approximately nine acres. The nine acres is highlighted with a dotted yellow. They see in that bottom left-hand corner of the highlighted yellow site plan. The request is for a minor general plan amendment on this nine acres. Currently, this area is designated as commercial under the general plan. The applicant is requesting that it be converted to master plan community to be included into the overall Hartman Ranch development. As we can see here, here's a conceptual land use pa, plan of the Hartman Ranch development. Right on the right-hand side of the screen there, where you see the NAP zoned CB2 PAD, that little corner right by Anderson Road is that area under consideration tonight. Staff and the applicant, we are not sure exactly how this was designated as C originally when this came through. The commercial area for this development was that whole NAP area. But this is a map cleanup to make sure to take that off of the map so that it could be developed with a single-family residential subdivision under the PAD that is being proposed. Conformity with the general plan, the proposed general plan future land use designation for master plan community is consistent with the proposed Hartman Ranch PAD zoning use and the RS5 Single Family Residential Zoning District as the base zone district for the PAD. The general plan objectives, this meets goal B2.2, assure the development of a diverse housing stock in both dwelling type and density that applies to the PAD and the single-family development. It also upholds objective B1.1.3, to develop walkable community and commercial nodes within the residential areas. Converting this to the MPC allows for that residential development. However, the commercial development in the PAD on that site plan, when we go back, that whole NAP area is still remaining commercial and is designated to be developed as commercial.
Derek, are you talking both blue areas are commercial?
I'm sorry?
Is that what, oh, you're talking the beige area? Which area? What color?
Yes, pardon. I am colorblind, so I, the darker of the lighter color is on the right-hand side. So that little square, almost square, and then part of that other polygon, that's kind of a rectangle square, just north of it there.
Are the commercial? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, that's commercial.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
For the public outreach, newspaper notice was published on May 20th. Notification letters were sent out on May 20th. Site signs were posted on May 21st. Neighborhood meeting was held on June 6th. And the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was on June 23rd. At that June 23rd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the planning commission recommended the mayor and council approve Resolution 25-25 for minor general plan amendment, case number GPA 24-03. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Very good. For this item, I have no speaker cards. It is not a public hearing. So council, do you have any questions, comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution 25-25.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Gettle. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Marsh. Additional opportunity for questions, comments? Is there anyone in the public that would like to approach the podium? I did, I just wanted to open that up. Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Very good. That takes us to our last item, 8 dot 5. Derek, if you would.
Madam Mayor, there we go. Just waiting for the presentation to load. Okay, there we go. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is item number 8.5 for ordinance number ORD 25-10. This is an application by Tim Raznick of Archicon Architecture and Interiors PC on behalf of Terrible's Gas Station. This is a rezon request under case number 0N25-03 for approximately 3.55 acres of property indicated on that vicinity map where it says site. This is at the southeast corner of West Bolin Road and North Porter Road. They have the wrong presentation. This is the sort of side presentation if you wanted to open up discussion. My apologies.
Would you like me to tell you more about 347?
There we go. That is the right one. My apologies. Technical issues. Starting over. So, this is an application by Tim Raznick of Archicon Architecture and Interiors LLC, LC, on behalf of Terrible C and the property owner Eldorado Partners 27 LLC, for the 3.55 acres of property located at the southeast corner of West Bolin Road and North Porter Road. This is a request for a rezon from the existing neighborhood commercial to a general commercial zoning district on a vacant lot for the development of a gasoline service station with convenience store and accessory car wash. As you can see here, on the current zoning map on the left and the proposed zoning map on the right, the applicant wishes to convert the property from being zoned neighborhood commercial to commercial to general commercial. The general plan future land use map designation for this site is commercial. This development is for the development of a car wash. As I just noticed, our technical difficulties threw me off my stride here. The proposed general plan future land use designation of commercial is consistent with the proposed rezon of the site to general commercial. The proposal meets the requirements outlined in Section 18 of the zoning ordinance, it's consistent with the general plan designation for the site, it's going to promote growth of the city in orderly manner for economic development. Public outreach occurred on May 2nd, notification letters were sent to property owners within 600 feet of the site. On May 2nd, the site was also posted. On May 6th, the newspaper notice was published. On May 22nd, neighborhood meeting was held. On June 9th, the case was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission at that meeting. There were a lot of questions about the development and the intensity of the development on the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission brought back a, voted three to three for a recommendation, which was no recommendation. Subsequent to that meeting, the applicant listened to the comments and concerns from the commission and also from the public. At that time, there were five emails of opposition, there were a number of people who spoke in opposition, there were also a number of people who spoke in support, and there was, we've received two letters of support for the rezon. So, yesterday, the Planning and Zoning Commission last night reconsidered their previous motion from June 9th, after a presentation for their development review permit, which was an informational item and a presentation by the applicant. The applicant is here and has their own presentation, should the council wish to hear it. They changed the site plan of what they were doing significantly, and enough that the Planning and Zoning Commission came back with a positive recommendation, a unanimous six oh recommendation in favor of the zone change, after seeing the changes that the applicant had made to their site plan. As you can see, on, so, on July 14th yesterday, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously six oh to recommend the mayor and city council approve rezon zoning map amendment case number ZON 25-03 and adopt ordinance number ORD 25-10, subject to conditions of approval stated in the ordinance or otherwise amended by the mayor and city council. And again, the applicant's development team is here, they have a presentation, should you wish to see it.
Thank you, Derek. So, I was very intrigued by this project, and I'll tell you more why afterwards, towards the end, but, through my intriguing curiosity, I watched last night's P&amp;Z meeting, and this is a beautiful example of a lot of things that I want to draw attention to, but, I would like all of council to be able to see the presentation by the developer, so if we can move forward with that, I think that'd be great, because I think this tells part of the story.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ashley Marsh from Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central for your record. Mayor, sorry to disappoint you, my colleague Stephen Anderson gave the presentation last night, but we will be going over the same information-
That's all right, yeah, good.
... and the great information and changes that were made as part of the process. With me this evening is Brian Caro, he is a senior land use planner with Gammage and Burnham. On behalf of Terrible's, we have Brett Griffin and Mitchell Mastroin, our architect. Collette can make it this evening, but we're very excited to go through our presentation and to share and highlight how this project has evolved from initial submittal, and really took in the great feedback from the community and from the planning commission, and integrated a number of changes that I'll walk you each through, hopefully as eloquently as Mr. Anderson did last night, but happy to share those with you. So, thank you also to staff for working with us through this project. I've had the pleasure of practicing with Derek for the better part of 10 years, and he always does great work, and this is absolutely no exception here, so thank you for staff for hanging with us on this as well. Just to give you a little bit more background, it's about a three and a half acre site that we're talking about at the southeast corner of Porter Road and Boland Road. As you see, we do have single family residential on our north side, but to our south is a build-to-rent community, and to our west there is a medical office building that banner facility, so really, a mix here with a, two arterials creating a nice commercial corner. As Derek mentioned, the rezon is in alignment with the general plan, this piece of property is already designated commercial, and a gas station and convenience store would be allowed by right in neighborhood commercial, so this request is really just to talk about a car wash component to add on to the Terrible's gas station. So, we've alluded to this, I'll get right into it out of efficiency for your time, I really do want to thank the planning commission and your staff for working with us through this process to highlight a few changes. As you see in this slide, we have the original and the updated plan, and hopefully my animation will work here to walk you through about 10 changes that we made in response to community concerns and planning commission feedback, to really take that feedback and make this a much improved site. A lot of those changes we'll walk through are to address that there are some residential neighbors to our north, and we have more commercial neighbors to our south, so taking that in mind, the first big change was to move the car wash equipment room and locate it from the east side to the south side, so as you see that, that is the stall for the, the car wash itself. As we had it originally proposed, you'll see it on that east side, and we've moved it now to the south side next to that build-to-rent community, multifamily community instead of the single-family residences, so you'll see the car move. We also changed the exit, so it now faces west instead of north, and I accidentally hit another button here, but I really want to draw your attention to is that 30-foot-long, eight-foot-high sound abatement wall and mature trees that were added to the south side. So, that is that green box and the yellow boomerang for lack of a better description, that's a sound abatement wall, and that's really to address community concerns and planning commission feedback on how are we going to address sound through the car wash. And so, by adding that landscape, removing those canopies on the original plan, and adding that landscaping and sound abatement wall, that really helps and provides a much better site plan. Another thing Terrible's has done is added noise diffusers to all the dryers, again, a noise abatement measure, and they've relocated the vacuums from any type of residence to along Porter, which is an arterial, you would expect more traffic, more noise, that's a way better location for those vacuums to be located, so a big change with a meaningful impact. Another really, really outstanding change and commendable is limiting hours of operation. I know I sure don't get my car washed at 10 o'clock at night, but here, Terrible's has limited their hours of operations to between 7:00 and 8:00 PM for that car wash to make sure to be sensitive to those residential neighbors to our south. More changes to the site plan, we, as I said, relocated that car wash, and in doing so, removed the fuel station, that canopy on the south side, so you see the big X through that original plan, that's now landscaping as you see in the updated plan, and we've reduced them from 20 to 14 pumps to, to make that site more efficient. Again, with doing so, the fuel pumps and convenience store move further south from the neighborhood, so you lose a little bit of perspective here, but that fuel pump and convenience store is actually moved south along that site plan, again, further from the residential to our north. And then, again, another big improvement was adding additional landscaping around the building along the south and east property lines, those are called out in the green boxes in the updated plan to provide additional mitigation for noise and to beautify the site. Another big point that we really want to thank planning commission and neighbor feedback was, is to make sure that we understood that there are schools in this area, and Terrible's really took that to heart and added additional safety mitigation along its street scape, so you'll see called out here in yellow, those are pedestrian pathways that will have texture and coloring to go ahead and make sure that those walkways are safe in response to some criticisms that there are school in the area, and Terrible's wants to be responsive to that. So, with that, it's a very short presentation, there's 10 really big changes we made, we are very happy to have earned unanimous approval from planning commission last night, having gone back, taken that feedback, made some really substantive changes, and are here today for recommendation of approval for our zoning case to move forward so that Terrible's can move forward with a much revised, much improved, updated site plan, so happy to answer any questions or come back after you've heard from some folks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think there will be some questions and comments, I know I have a few. I want to just finish the story that I talked about in terms of being intrigued by this project, because so often I listen to our residents indicate that nothing ever changes when you come to P&amp;Z, nothing ever changes when you come to council, and this is such a beautiful example of how our residents can have a voice and how we can have developers who are listening, and I want to personally thank, first of all, I'll start with Terrible's and the developer, because you did listen, you heard, you reacted, you made changes that I think are significant. I want to thank our staff, because you guys did a marvelous job, I've watched all of the P&amp;Z sessions, and you did a marvelous job. I want to thank our P&amp;Z commissioners, of which we have two here tonight, and through the leadership of Chair Singleton, you guys did an amazing job, you asked the right questions, you posed some challenges to the developer, but each step of the way, the developer was understanding and listening and hearing and wanting to help out, and specifically, you know, with the school problem and the challenge of traffic and so many things, the hours of operation of the car wash, I, that's a beautiful change, because I think it works well. I heard in some of the public input, going from 20 pumps, they didn't feel like you needed 20 pumps there, and because of all the other requests that were made, you're like, okay, let's go to 14, you move those pumps back away from Boland Road, which helps the neighbors across the street, and I will say, when I listened last night, I have to agree with our staff and with the developer, the question was asked, don't you want to offset the drive from Homestead and the drive from Terrible's? And I live in that situation over at Homestead, and the answer is no, no offsetting, it causes many more collisions than you might even think about. So, I was really impressed, and that's the reason that I wanted to speak about the story, because that's, to me, that's the message that I want out there in our community, is that people came forward, changes were made, and we don't know what the outcome is at this point, but I wanted to make that, and thank you guys very much. I do have one speaker card, Ron Anjarami, if you would like to come forward, that would be great.
I thank you, City Council, for allowing me to talk about the Terrible Gas Station. I sent you a picture, I took this picture from my backyard, that's the before picture. My backyard aligns with Allen Stevens, this view is across both Allen Stevens and Porter. I included the projected view, including the gas station, and now I'll have the Terrible view when I go to my backyard, that's the after picture. So, you can imagine, no one would want this view from their home, it's hard to imagine sitting in your backyard trying to enjoy the serenity of your home while seeing a sign that says Terrible. If other homes like mine have this diagonal view aspect, almost 30 homes might have this view from their backyard. I can't imagine the impact this will have on property values. I've confirmed with the HOA that they are receptive to the idea of additional trees along the roadways. This would seem to be a very minor cost relative to the cost of the total gas station acquisition and installations. They say good fences make good neighbors, and this definitely seems to be one of those times. This decision is much more than wanting a car wash. You might ask, how did we get into the current situation? Ages ago, Pinal County made a decision to zone the area as commercial. Well, what did it look like back then when they made the determination? No schools, no apartments, no high-density housing, and certainly no traffic congestion as we see now. Back then, it was probably the right call to make it commercial. In 2020, when the area was rezoned neighborhood commercial to facilitate the deployment of EDR multifamily, multifamily housing. But that is not the situation we have today. There's been an explosion of residential in both single-family, high-density apartments, condos, and three schools. Workers commuting to Phoenix now conflict with school start times, making a dangerous situation for our kids. There is a further explosion of housing off Porter, just on the other side of Casa Grande and along Stoneoran Parkway. And if you know those, and you know that those people going to work are not going to go to work by traveling to casino and then heading up on John Wayne, they're all going to be coming up Porter. There are more critical issues we should be addressing regarding rezoning, not a car wash. The present situation and the plans for the near future, I find it extremely challenging to believe that the changing of the zoning from the limited neighborhood commercial to the more expansive general commercial will solve the real issues facing us. Let's not have to worry in the future, should the adjoining lot be sold to another business that is also incompatible with the neighborhood. It will be a no consolation to hear in the future, well, that's private property and we can't tell them what to do. We appreciate the responsibility you have to allow Maricopa to grow in a way that is beneficial to all. It is my understanding that Terrible has not yet actually purchased a property. Let's help Terrible select a better location that is both beneficial to them and protecting the safety and positive growth of Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, always appreciate your insight there. Okay, that opens it up to council for questions, comments? Anyone? All right, I guess that makes it simple. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Manfredi, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Gettle?
Before, before we vote-
Yes, do I have a before, yes?
I'd like to make a comment, and, great to hear from Ron, great to hear from everybody, I've got a couple of letters here, I've got a couple of people who've spoke up against the project, some for reasons of worrying about people stopping at a stop sign as they come out of it, it's not the developer's fault if somebody doesn't stop at a stop sign, it's going to be there, but, what I take from it is pretty simple, the developer came to the city of Maricopa with a plan, and that plan was not liked by a few people. So, the people came out and they spoke up, and they had a conversation with the city, and the developer listened, of course, and they've made many changes to the, to the plan. A lot of the changes that I've seen today, and I looked at in the package, were, were changes that people actually asked for. Move the, move the car wash away from this side to this side, they did that, add more trees, they did that, um, oh, less pumps, they did that, move it back away from the homes that are north of Boland there, they did that. So, it's like they listened to almost everything except don't do it, right? Now, obviously, it's their piece of land, or it's going to be their piece of land, and they're doing their due diligence before buying it, if they haven't closed yet, I don't know. But, the reality to it is, I hear a lot of times people say, don't show up for a council meeting, don't show up for a planning and zoning meeting, because no matter what you say, they're going to approve it anyway. And the reality is, that's not true. If you show up to a planning and zoning meeting and you talk about things, things can change. If you show up at a council meeting and you talk about things, things can change before they're put in place. And in this case, they made a ton of changes that makes it more palatable, and in reality, if they came to us with the initial, I might have been saying no to it, but here I go, and I go ahead and made a motion to approve, because although some folks are not going to be happy with it, it's the same for every development and every piece of commercial property. I'm pretty sure there's people that aren't happy with Home Depot or Lowe's blocking their views and seeing it from their yard. I'm sure there's people that don't like the stoplights wherever they are for Home Depot and Lowe's and whatever it is, but, for the community as a whole, it's a good thing, so that's why I went ahead and made the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Nor.
Thank you, Mayor, and just before we vote, I just wanted to comment as well, and I appreciate everyone who came out to speak on this and the letters and the information we've received, and I appreciate the adjustments that have been made by the developer. I think that it's important, I think it was stated in the presentation, but it's important to restate that currently, the gas station is already allowed-
Yes.
-and no zoning change would be needed if, if it were just the gas station, but the addition of the car wash is what necessitates this, which I think, I mean, gas station car wash, it's all, it's, it's not a big difference at the end of the day for the neighborhood, even if you've been to a gas station- Even if you've been to a gas station in Maricopa, you know we desperately need more. Every time I pull into a gas station, and not just during like rush hour times, it's, I'm waiting for a, for a pump. And so clearly, we need this, and I look forward to voting on it in a couple of minutes, but you know, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. I have a cell phone tower in my backyard essentially, and I don't love it, and I didn't want it there, but for the greater good and everybody's cell service, I get to look at it every day. So I get it. I understand, but at the end of the day, we have to do what's, you know, in the best interest of the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh.
Yes, I noticed a subtle feature in the final plan that leads me to believe that Terrible's is thinking about the future when we convert to electric vehicles. Nearly the whole perimeter of this property is set up with side-by-side parallel parking, where you can put in charging stations and charge about 50 cars at a time if you want. There's room to grow. And I've been to a Terrible's in Vegas, and it's not terrible, it's a wonderful place. It's a happy place. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I hear correctly that the status on the purchase of the land is not completed, the location is not completed and it's still in the process?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, wait, I'd have to defer to the applicant's team on the status of the purchase of the property.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the property is in escrow.
It is in escrow.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you. Many have already expressed my feelings here, and again, the buy rights of this property would already be moving forward with the gas station, adding the car wash component with the sound mitigation efforts that the applicant has gone above and beyond to meet the need and the desires of the community have caused me to second this and look forward to voting for it when we come.
Thank you. And because this is such an interesting project, Councilmember Lierman, I don't want to miss you. Anything?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, very good. So at this point, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations. That brings us to the end of our City Council. Thank you all for attending.